It's now sessions. Good evening, I will now call or to order the June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, City of South Pasadena Library Board of Trustees Meeting. Library Director Kathy Billings, please call the roll. Um. President Annie Chang Long, President Kenneth Gross.
Yeah.
Ninsan Meeker.
Yeah.
Edward Pearson.
Here.
Bianca Richards.
Here.
We have a call. Um, is there any public comments online? There's none in person?
No, no public comment.
Public comment period is closed. Um, does anyone need to reorder or add anything or do anything from the agenda?
Okay.
Nope. Nope. Hearing none, we will continue to the next item. Um, approval of the minutes of May ninth, Board of Trustees Meeting.
Yeah, I moved to approve the minutes of the May ninth Library Board Trustees Meeting.
Second, second great, thank you. Did you get that? Um. Bianca moves. Min's. Are there any questions or anything? Okay, um, hearing then, um, we have a motion, a second, um, can we take the roll?
Yes, uh, Annie Chang Wong.
Yes.
Kenneth Gross.
Yes.
Ninsan Meeker.
Yes.
Edward Pearson.
Yes.
Bianca Richards.
Yes.
Okay. So approval of the Library Board of Trustees accomplishments and goals for, uh, presenting at our June twentieth Commissioner Congress. Um, so it's recommended that the trustee review and consider approval of board accomplishments in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, and the goals for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-four, so that we can present it on the, at the June twentieth Commissioner Conference, Congress, and, um, it should include all the things that we discussed last month, so.
Yeah, and I just wanted to, yeah, I just want to say that, uh, Kathy and Sean, you guys did a great job of getting all of our thoughts cohesive. It looked, it looked, yeah.
Yeah, we, I was telling Annie, you know, we, we watched the video, we both looked at our notes, and it was sort of like, lots of little things that when you put them all together was basically like oversight for all the things that happened, and that's what you're supposed to be doing, right? It was sort of like, it's sort of, I don't know, but it's totally, you guys, any changes you want.
You all did a good job.
You can do whatever.
I was gonna say, you're all just talked about the same points.
Yeah, a lot of things. Yeah, it just sort of rolled all into one.
And I like what you sent about whatever was community services or whatever.
Yeah, that would, that helped, that was helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought maybe that would get, that was maybe, oh, maybe we should do X, Y, Z.
Yeah, we have to tell what we do.
Yeah, that was nice.
You're in and you're out.
The only thing, I don't know if it's worth noting in one of, in number one, as far as like a specific thing, but just appointing Bianca to the, um, ad hoc committee. Um, just, yeah, I'd like to emphasize that we will have a plate upon, that we are planning to participate in.
So just include that in number one?
Mm-hmm, like as a comma, as some, um, that, you know, we.
Representative.
Kind of representative.
You don't need to use my name, why don't we just say represented from the board beyond the.
Yeah, so that they know, like, we're, we're talking about it, and we know that we want to be included in it. Other than that, that looks great. Um, goals did, did everyone cheer?
Hmm, that was, like I said, it was.
You guys.
Well, that synthesized this well.
Like, you got three sentences, yeah.
I am super excited, I.
Oh, no.
This is literally what we did, yeah.
I thought we would might be, I thought this might be a very long discussion, because some years it happened.
Um, any public, well, we don't have any public comment. Um, can I get a motion that we adopt this recommendation for accomplishments and goals?
Also move.
By second, uh, news and Bianca's seconds. You call the roll. Uh, Annie Chang Wong?
Yes.
Kenneth Gross?
Yes.
Ninsan Meeker?
Yes.
Edward Pearson?
Yes.
Bianca Richards?
Yes.
Carrie. Great. Um, Administrative Policies Review Committee Progress Report, so Kenny and.
Um, but you missed.
Sorry, sorry, this, um, this, um, Community Site Plan, Community Center Site Plan, Project Progress Update, so, I don't know, Bianca?
I don't think it has anything, but I do, I mean, I can tell you, so, um, we're trying to, you know, we, we, the, the committee members got appointed on May fifteenth. Um, it took us a couple of weeks to even get back to those folks to say, hey, here's what's happening, so, um, right now, I've asked them all to fill out a Google form with availability and this kind of thing, because I gotta try to figure out how, when this is gonna happen. My goal, or our goal, is hopefully to have a meeting on July first, and that would be the ad hoc committee's first meeting. Um, we would have, uh, Brown Act training for that body. There are a lot of people on there that have not participated in city commissions and whatnot, so, new, probably new information to some of them, although some of them work for municipal governments elsewhere, so, uh, so they'll do a, a kind of an abbreviated Brown Act training, and then, um, we would also be bringing in the consultant that we have kind of on, on call, who has done a lot of this kind of work, to try to give everyone sort of the big picture and the timeline and the roles and responsibilities, just sort of like a big overview. Um, and we haven't figured out the whole agenda exactly, but that's sort of the general idea, is that would be the kickoff. Um, simultaneously, going alongside all of this, we're trying to get that, uh, the batch of submissions from thirteen down to a somewhat smaller number for the ad hoc commissioners to review, so they're not reviewing all thirteen. So, um, myself, Lucy Hukobian, um, who is the Deputy Director of Community Services, and, uh, Mayor Senimer and Councilmember Braun are ranking those, you know, rating and ranking those proposals. Um, so, immediately, those things are happening at the same time, you guys, you have your first meeting, and then shortly thereafter, we're ready to, to share those proposals for you guys to review and rate and discuss, and we decide who to come in and interview, et cetera. Um, also, still on the to-do list related to ad hoc committees, that we, um, need to get the, get a website up, so that people have access to the information that they need, the background information, the, the request for qualifications, everything. Um, and that just is, just needs to get done, and I haven't done it. Partly, the city wants a new website, so then I didn't know how to use the backend yet, but I got trained on Thursday, so now I do know how, so try to get that done as soon as I can, but certainly before the first meeting, so that people have time to look at all that material if they want to before the meeting. So that's sort of where we are, the ad hoc, uh, committee hasn't actually done anything yet. But we're moving, right? I mean, it's progress.
Is, is the website for internal, like, for that committee, or is it a public?
No, it's public, you know, I, typically, in the past, if there's some big citywide type project happening, it, it would be like under the city manager, so like the city strategic plan. There's a, you know, there's information under that there, and so, um, the Royal, they're doing the golf course site plan and the site plan, so any big kind of citywide projects, we would just capture all that, general plan, downtown specific plan, that would all have been under there. Um, so, you know, it just gives people access to every, um, council meeting where, you know, where the staff reports were discussed. Sort of, and I think for us, we have a lot of background information, right? We have our strategic plan, community services has a number of things that people might be interested in. There may be things that we don't think need to go out to the public, so we, you know, we'll have, um, we have Microsoft Teams, so we'll be able to share documents with that group through Microsoft. I, I figured that out, but for sure, we'll be able to share documents either with everybody on the website or with a smaller group, that's, that's great. That's where we are.
I have two questions.
Yes.
Um, and maybe you guys said this in the past and I missed it, do you guys use like some sort of scoring rubric? Um, for the qual, like the RFQs, and then is the RFQ the same as an RFP? Will you, like, is, because I was just curious, like, after the RFQ, is it narrowing it down and then asking them to submit proposals?
That is a conversation that, uh, we've had with the consultant. Um, so, yes, I don't know, I don't know if it's a rubric, but, um, it's a standard form and based on what was in the RFQ, so, you know, if we said, we need this, 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 and this, did they do that, this, this, and this, how, you know, how well? So numerical scoring, um, for all of these items. It was a little bit of a challenge to work with that particular RFQ to create that, um, I didn't, I didn't write it. Which is not to say that if I had it, would have been easier to do that, but, um, yes, so request for qualifications is, um, not the same as a request for proposal. So a request for qualifications is like, tell us about, you, you know, just give us an idea of why you would be qualified to participate and do this. And then, yes, when you're ready to like get down to brass tacks, they, they submit a request for proposal. So as soon as we release the RFQ, we have vendors asking us, so, what is this, and is there gonna be a request for proposal? So I'm not sure how that's gonna play out. I think that, um, the consultant has some thoughts about that and what that will look like, but the, the, the middles, and I'm not calling them proposals specifically because their submissions, uh, for this request for qualifications are more like proposals. So if we went back and asked for proposals, it would look pretty much like what they submitted in the request for qualifications. So I think maybe either we should have done a request for proposals in the first place, or we should have done a request for qualifications that was written a little differently. But we have what we have, so, yeah, the consultant, um, has a lot of experience, and he helped us to kind of understand that from his perspective, and so, yeah, we'll see.
Can you remind us, are they, um, how, how often was the, are they supposed to be meeting?
We haven't decided frequently, um, I need to look at the availability to see if we can come up with like a monthly. I mean, I think we want a regular, a regularly scheduled meeting, so, I mean, monthly probably makes sense. Um, but we might also need special meetings, it is a Brown Act body, so we have to do postings seventy-two hours in advance and, and follow all of those, you know, rules. Um, I'm, I'm thinking probably monthly, it's not up to me necessarily, but I think that sounds about right.
Can, can I, did you guys all get to look at the, the members at large? Does anybody know anybody?
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I know Jasmine Wong, the last one listed, she's a mom at our school, and her daughter, and my daughter's Girl Scouter. She's awesome, she's a mom of three girls.
Yeah.
I know Tony, the gerontologist.
I know, when you mentioned that there was a gerontologist that applied, I'm like, God, it's Tony.
Well, Dr. Ho. Tony Ho, he's a gerontologist for everyone I know. He's super excited, I just talked to him at the staff party.
Oh, is he excited?
Really, really excited.
I, I, some of these folks, I was like, they're so busy and accomplished, how are they ever gonna find the time?
He's been wanting to, he's been reaching out to other places in the city to volunteer, and he hasn't heard about it, so I think he's really excited about this.
Yeah, and then I know Tom, he was my former neighbor, and he's the father of, of a son who is disabled in a wheelchair, and he used to work for the City of Santa Monica. He was in their, uh.
He still does work in some.
He's, he works for the City of L.A. now, he transferred, he was at Santa Monica, now he's with L.A. So, yeah.
Yeah, it was a really interesting group, I don't know. We hadn't presented this to council, so I don't know that you guys, we would have talked about this list last time. Um, it was a really interesting group of people, these are all people that we interviewed, you know, one-on-one, virtually, but, um, many, many of them said things like, I have get, I, the city has given me so much, and I'm, I've, I've never had the opportunity to give back, and I really want to, I'm ready to do that now, and this seemed like the perfect thing for me, it was really interesting, we, we heard that many times from folks. So, and it was hard, there were fifty-eight applicants.
Amazing, though.
And we were, in fact, we were supposed, I think our committee was supposed to be like eleven or something, but, um, but, yeah, we just couldn't, we couldn't, it was too hard to, uh, make it more.
So, any other questions? Um, we go on to Administrative Policies Review Committee Progress Report, Kenny and I, I don't know if you guys have minds on me?
We, we didn't meet together, but, I mean, we did meet as a group at the end of May with, uh, Kathy and Sean there and Nada and, uh, Min and I, and, um, just discussed how, um, the group would get Min and I, um, different cities, um, policies, and there's some have municipal code, and just for us to review and start digging into that. So we just got that information, uh, put out there together.
Not even that.
So we haven't looked at it yet, but Min and I, I decided we're gonna divide it up, and just spread it up and look to see what's, what's in there, and, and sort of, you know, what are common, common ways of dealing with things with a lot of the different cities. And, uh, I guess we'll look some other cities too.
I think we, the report says we, back in twenty-twenty-one, we were looking at like eleven cities, um, and we added some that mostly also use a municipal code as part of their kind of enforcement package, so we added a few more cities that do use municipal codes, so we can see what that looks like.
I have a question, I didn't look into these yet, um, are you, is it twenty-twenty-one or two thousand one, because on the list here, it says two thousand one, I wondered why it was.
Did it say two thousand one? No, it should say two thousand twenty-one.
Yeah, sorry about that. And then, the one that you put up, Santa Monica's, that you let us look at, wow, theirs was good.
Yeah, we like, there's a lot.
Wow.
There's a couple that.
Really good.
Yeah, there's a couple that kind of stood out, and we thought, oh, that's a good, that's a good, um, uh, you know, a good thing, maybe a good model.
Um, and their website was really good, too, and it was very, and it was very accessible, it was easy to read, it was clear.
Yeah.
Because that idea of like, you know, you can't post everything, so like if somebody said something, where is that? You can easily get to a computer.
Yeah.
And then.
Yeah, and I'm sure they.
And that's what I, for sure.
You know, I'm sure they have a physical, we don't really have anything physical prepared that you can say, oh, you know, hi, by the way, here's the rules. So, yeah, so this is, um, the admin office, Michael worked on this. Um, and if anybody wants the full packet of all of these documents, we can send it, but basically, you can, he's put the links to the materials, so you can just go look at them.
Yeah.
Where they live. Um, and he went up on Beyond, he, like, if they had sections, he pulled some sections that they had. Um, so he kind of dug in there and got, did a little extra, which is great. So, yeah, I mean, I think we're, again, it often were the bottleneck, you know, we met on, I don't remember, you know, it was like two weeks between when we met and when we got them this information, so now it's in their hands, it'll probably go much faster.
Okay, I have a clarifying question, because I don't remember from our discussion, so as Kenny and I are reviewing, can we also, uh, find best practices in the municipal code, or the municipal code is more like that?
No, go ahead. No, I mean, again, I think it's sort of two separate things, but you can't really do the code of conduct without thinking about the municipal code, so as we're moving forward, could have con, I mean, the municipal code is probably as separately, but process to get a change, but knowing how we want to change it, that can happen at the same time. Yeah.
And then I like to know, do we have a, do you guys have an expectation of timeframe?
I don't. No, I mean, I have no expectations.
Well, okay, choose some outside.
I mean, you can make your own, or we, I mean, I don't know. Yeah, you guys, you guys decide, because honestly, we're so busy that when you get them to us, it's, we're gonna slow everything down again, probably, so you guys figure out what works for you, and let us know, so that we can then start thinking, okay, they're gonna hand that back to us by such and such, and then we can try to shoehorn some time in for that.
I mean, I think generally, at these meetings, we'll probably have a standing meeting, to like just check in, and see, you know, if anything you guys want to share or ask us, I feel like that would be a good use.
And especially, we are in June, and I forget, there's one, is there one month we're not meeting?
Well, no, we, we can cancel a meeting if we want, but, um, we're not currently canceled. I looked back, and they used to cancel like every August or something, but we haven't done this, so, so, yeah, it's up to you guys, if you don't, you basically have to come to the decision that there's not enough business for the agenda, or there's not a forum. Um, but, yeah, I mean, I think that, yeah, maybe that's the, the timing or the deadline, is that we try to do enough work between meetings, that there's something needed to discuss, report, take action on, as we go meeting to meeting.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be everything, but I feel like maybe that's a good timing of just whatever is helpful, that you guys do the first review to see if it's by topic or by city, yeah.
And, and we can, you know, you guys can check in with us, because Barb and Nada are still kind, we're still working on our stuff, too, so we can check in separately before the June, uh, the July meeting. But, um, yeah, that's a good, that's a good way to think about it, it's just you have a month. You know, we have a month, we'll make some progress, and then we'll.
Yeah.
Set our next.
We have our goal of revising it by June of twenty-twenty-five, and like, very, I need.
I was still saying, like, I mean, generally, I'm thinking that's what we want, right? Within this, this one year.
Yeah, the goal that we're doing, and to work backwards, we come up with this, yeah.
So does, so, for clarification, so really, the mu, does a municipal code trump the library?
So what the municipal code is, so, for example, City of Los Angeles, they don't have anything in their municipal code related to library behavior enforcement. Um, when they have someone that is breaking the rules, they have to, um, issue a trespass order, right? They have to use a criminal approach. Um, and so, it's not that it, it's not that it trumps the rules, and in our case, the municipal code is saying, it, it points back to these rules, and says, if you do what these guys have said in the code of conduct, you can't do those things.
Oh, so we, so then the library code of conduct could trump a municipal code?
Doesn't trump it, it just is the, it's the backup.
I think of, I think the library code can't be inconsistent with the municipal code, and sometimes municipal code general provisions of it would apply to, to the administrative policies, and we could apply that some violation of somebody, like trespass, could apply, somebody could be trespassing, the library, I don't know if there's a trespass municipal code section. Whatever, whatever, there could be a municipal code section that's general enough that would apply to one of the policies.
You guys are looking then, looking at the municipal code as self.
Because I think some of the cities have.
Self-possessions, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, again, that this municipal code was adopted, this specific piece of it, in twenty-seventeen, to help us have a mechanism to attach some consequences to these behaviors. So they go hand in hand in this case, I, maybe other cities, that is not the case, but my understanding from what the research Michael has done is that these are libraries that are like us, if it says, yes, under municipal code, that they are, they do that similarly, they actually have a job to code about what people can and can't do in the library. So the municipal code is a lot broader, right? It says, you can't do any of the things that are in the code of conduct. Right? I mean, so you guys have, you know, we have like more control over that, um, which is great. Uh, if we had code hiding to municipal code, every little tiny thing would be, be terrible. So it says, you can't do any of those things, and it also sort of breaks it down into, if you do these kinds of things, it's this many days, you're banned. And if you do these kinds of things, it's this many days. And for us, the municipal code is just, you'll see, it's not written, yeah, very clearly, and it, yeah, it's, it's same as the clean conduct in practice, it doesn't quite work. And like, we can talk about it at, and we're, so, but, but if he was in front of us, you would see. Um, it's especially hard to figure out, okay, this person did this thing, is, is it third, is it gonna be thirty days, or should it be a day, you, you, you know, it's just written in situators, really. We need it to be, you know, level one of them. It needs to be a little, a little inferior, you'd say, I think.
Okay.
All right, yes. I'm really curious to see what the other cities municipal codes are like, although I will tell you that, um, Arcadia, ours is exactly, our city attorney at the time that this was adopted was the city attorney for Arcadia, so I was looking at municipal codes, and, and I was like, well, that sounds, that sounds familiar, they're bad like ours, and then I was like, oh, that, it is, theirs is ours, so, um, you'll see that when we get to Arcadia.
Yeah, and Santa Monica's was a little, uh, uh, very little too, I thought a little bit too detailed.
Yeah, I'm curious.
Yeah.
I have no idea.
But I like their conduct, but they're, yeah, but.
I mean, every city is gonna be a little different, that's why I think we have to look at them, just see, like, what, what looks good, what looks like will work. I, I think I mentioned it in the email, um, or at least to you guys. Uh, Long Beach should be interesting, because they're the ones that just recently had their blow up, they had to close for six weeks, because staff wouldn't, you know, were like, we can't work here anymore, it's too dangerous, like, it became, um, just, they reached all, reached their breaking point, so their municipal code is brand new. Um, as part of their, how are we, you know, where are we going next? Um, so I'm curious to see what a bigger city like that, who probably has a, you know, pretty solid attorney situation.
I know, we also talked about it in our committee meeting, but I would be curious, I don't know if you guys know this, or we could just call and ask which of the libraries use private security, or just have security onsite, because we talked about, I think enforcement by staff is really challenging for a number of reasons, like, that's not their job. Um, and there's, you know, certain instances where I think security can help, so.
Yeah, we, I don't know, again, that's my timing, I don't know when, between when we met and now, but, um, recently, probably since we last met, I met with, um, the Chief of Police, and the Deputy Chief, and Lieutenant Shannon Robleto to talk about all of the library issues. Um, so they're doing a little work for me right now, or helping us by trying to get a, kind of a ballpark figure of what that would cost to have a security guard. Um, the staff have been talking about it, you know, just sort of a, what time would you want that, I mean, would, would be the most effective, and so we're starting to put all those pieces together, and yes, we're gonna reach out to other libraries and find out, you know, what are they doing, do they have security guards, do they have them on staff, or is it the police? Um, you know, every city has a little bit different, so that will be helpful, too, I think, to find out who, you know, who's using security guards, and, um, yeah, what company are they using, et cetera, so we're gonna do that. Um, and we're also sort of part of this, I think, in order to ultimately, like, make the case that we need a security guard and, and, and be able to really document and tell the story, we're spending some time with what we call our Code of Conduct Log, which is just where we track everything that happens. Um, and it's just this giant spreadsheet, so we're trying to, um, for example, some categories, and then go back now and say, well, this falls into the category of, I don't know what an example is, um, threatening, uh, you know, or maybe what level of offense or something, like, we just need to be able to pull it out and be able to say, you know, in fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, we, we documented a hundred and forty instances, and this percentage of them were dangerous, this percentage of them were nuisances, or something like that, so we're looking at that, also looking at the time of day, you know, so we can say, also helping us think about security guard, if, if we're seeing a pattern in there about time of day, for example, Thursday nights. Um, I was, I was late to this meeting.
Thursday.
I was like, down there tonight, dealing with some, uh, children. Um, so, yeah, so we're trying to kind of mine that code of conduct and make it a little bit, we can tell a better story with that information, because the information's there, it's just not, we really need to look into, like, some kind of incident tracking software, you know, we need to, we need, it needs to be like a database, where you can look up somebody's name and find all the things they've done, because there's a lot of repeat, a lot of repeat offenders. So, yeah, we're sort of on, we, we started this process of trying to gather this information, and then hopefully be able to make a case and explain, you know, we need this, this, and this, and, and as part of the budget, which we'll talk about the budget eventually, um, prioritizing, we need some money for these safety security things, we need the electronic key cards, we need some cameras, we need, you know, whatever we need, so, um, I feel like there's a little bit of movement, and I, and I don't remember if I told you this, but the Public Safety Commission brought up, had library safety on their agenda. And that, to me, was like, oh, a little traction, you know, um, that someone else has, has taken an interest. Um, one of the, the chair of that commission, uh, I think he's, he does things with the Senior Center, so he's, like, he sees what goes on, he might have seen when we have the police and the man yell, you know, we had a. Man, you know, we had a big thing uh, a month or so ago, that might have been on his mind. But but another one of the commissioners uses the library inside and had some anecdotes about things he's seen and not seen. So they, they're really like, their, their. Issue is, you know, what are we doing about this? We're worried about the staff, we're worried about safety, um, you know, what's going on? So so it was really actually great and um, I think having some other body out there that has the, an interest. Can't, can't hurt. So I kind of thought, well, let's just take that momentum and try to see if we can. I mean, a lot of it's on us again, as usual, you know, we need to put, put together the information, we need to go to the right people and need to say, this is the situation. We need this type of help. Um, so we're working on it.
Yeah, I mean, can we recommend to you to have this item next month or in two months to review that report too? Because I think we can be advocates for that too.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
The more we know how much to mobilize control because.
Right.
You know, I think all of those things, yeah, everyone who comes here sees them.
Yeah, let me think, um, I know Maida has one of the part-time librarians working on it, um.
In two months?
Well, let me see, let me talk to Maida and Louis and see where they're, where they're at. Um, and we can aim for July, but if we aren't gonna be ready, we can do it in August. Um, I mean, it would be informational, so I would think by then I would, we should be able to have some, you know, information. So we can put it on the agenda just to discuss it, even if it's not, you know, taking an action. So um, yeah, I made a note, we will do that in July and some more.
For ministry to call, please, are you all good? This is very exciting.
Nice to have the help.
It really is, really, it really is a relief to feel like.
Help us and we want to never get it done.
Look for whatever you all think is appropriate. Any other comments? Budget updates for for this fiscal year?
Yeah, I just, um. I wanted to just give you a sense of where we are for this fiscal year. Um, I broke it into the, there's like three pages in a row and I broke it into maintenance and operations. Um. That's happening, no, sorry, I broke it into wages and benefits on the first page. Um, up in the top left corner, it says wages and benefits. So you can see, um, we're gonna be probably under spent a little bit on full-time salaries. Um, on the part-time salaries, I think we're probably gonna be under spent by like eighteen thousand dollars. Um, and I explained today, I I met with one of the council members who wanted to talk about budgets with the different department heads and. You know, we haven't filled those since the mid-year budget discussions when it was sort of like, oh, we helped. You know, pulling arrangements, don't spend the money, um, we have those vacant aid positions, we're low on substitute librarians. And uh, we're down a clerk, so I think that's why we're underspent. Um, and that's probably sort of typical, I'd rather be underspent than overspent. Um, I, it's, it's so hard to predict the vacancy rates for us. Because there's just a lot of turnover in those entry level, you know, lowest paid positions. Um, so, but it's good, I mean, for years, uh, when I came, the first year I was here, I think we were forty percent over budget on. You know, like no one was actually trying to figure out how much do we need? They just kept using the same number and then going over by thirty percent or forty percent. So I think that the, the method that we're using to make our budget request is. Has been proving to be working, which is good. Um, it's a little bit hard for, I think, the council members to get their heads around that. If we have ten aides, we don't get the, the cost by saying ten aides times eighteen hours a week equals whatever. Because aides, we sort of do do that, but like with the substitute librarians, we have like twelve substitute librarians. One works three hours a month and one works, you you know, if you said that number of librarians. Times the number of hours the physician is authorized for, the numbers would be crazy. So we have a different way on the backend. Um, and we get to the twenty four, twenty five, I'll tell you what that is, so any, everything is good, wages and benefits. Um, next page is maintenance operations and also. Um, you can see we're, we still theoretically have, you know, almost, almost thirteen percent of the budget. Left to spend of um. A big, we won't by the end of the year, basically, like if you see the books, DVDs and CDs line, um, it looks like we. So we still have twenty one thousand dollars encumbered and that'll be spent. Um, that should probably be spent by the end of the year. I think one of the places that, um, if you look and see where we're not spending or or there's a big available balance. It's places that we sometimes, it, we, we budget more money. Because it's for things we don't know they're going to happen, so equipment maintenance, building maintenance. If nothing breaks, we don't need the money. Um, so it's a good thing that those numbers are like that. Um, and also the um, conference and meeting expense is, you know, we still have seventy five. Time on the right line, or no, ninety five percent of that available, because that was another mid-year thing, which was, don't. Don't spend that money, council doesn't want us doing that, so um, so and because our. Maintenance operations budget is so small that like a six thousand dollars unspent kind of impacts the total unspent. But I think in general, we're, you know, we're on track, we're not gonna be over budget, um, we're gonna be close to having spent, aren't we? And then capital outlay, um, we are frantically trying to. Get all of our purchase orders and um, contracts in place for the teen room stuff. So we placed, we placed an order for uh, the soft furniture. Uh, we are waiting for a purchase order number from finance for uh, the tables. And I'm waiting for one more quote for the high counters that would be in the back. Um, I'm getting the carpet quotes, I have like three days to get them finished, so it's kind of tricky, but um. We, the carpet quotes need to come in and then we met with the, a painting contractor today, so I think um, we may not. Get it together to spend all of our money and it's just, we just didn't have the staff, you know, we just started late because there was no other choice. Um, the friends have conveyed an interest in helping us however we need help. So whatever we can't get into this city fiscal year budget, we'll probably ask the friends to help us out. So like if I can't get the carpet quotes in time, we'll say, ask the friends if they'll pay for the carpet. So, and I'll, next time I'll show you, I'll bring some pictures and stuff, so you can see what we're getting.
Is there no way to um, roll it over to the next fiscal?
You have to have a purchase order, so you have to, it has to be encumbered. Um, you can't just say, oh, I wanna keep that for next year, you have to say, I have a, an arrangement to spend it. So that's why I'm rushing around trying to get the purchase orders, because I can't, for example, we're buying a new, we wanna get a new um. Mobile device charging station for them, there's two in the library, but they need one back there. But it has like a custom graphic that I have to give them and so, like I could pay for it with the city, my credit card. But it won't get charged until they ship it and it's not gonna ship by June thirtieth. So we have to get purchase orders for everything, even if they're um, less than the twenty five hundred dollar limit that I have. So yeah, uh, yeah, basically, can't roll it over unless you committed it um, in, in their books. So that's where we are with that and then there, sure, there'll be money left over because part of that machinery and equipment, that forty nine thousand dollars. Was for a new book drop, which we also were told, don't, don't, don't do that, which is fine, we, we can't even get this furniture together. I, who, how we've gotten that ordered, I don't, I mean, we're actually, we were pretty close to being ready to do that and it's not as complicated as the furniture. So we might have been able to do it, but it involved ADA, concrete, a whole piece of it that I have no control over. So we'll, we'll look at that, we'll look at that next, next time. So that's where we are with this year's budget, any, any questions about that? It's all pretty standard. Um, and then where's the next page? Okay, so the next page, just if you wanna look at it, this is the draft. Um, you know, narrative, this is, this is what goes in the budget document. Um, so this version that we're looking at is, was published um. At the joint council, joint finance commission and council meeting on. June fifth, sorry, I just wanna be clear because I don't want a bunch of. Budget documents floating around and it's not clear, so these are from June fifth. Um, the timeline is looking like, I mean, obviously we would like to have a budget adopted before the end of the fiscal year. Um, and we had at least two meetings with a joint finance and council. Finance has had a meeting of its own, um, Monday, we're, we're having another joint finance and council meeting. So that will be the next time we see a new version of this budget, just sort of FYI for the timeline. I, I don't think we're asking them to adopt it on Monday because they're not ready for that. So there'll probably be a meeting, special meeting later in June to hopefully request, you know, hopefully get them to adopt it. But for our purposes, if you look on the next page, which has the library, you know, wages and benefits, again, operations, maintenance, capital outlay. Um, this is all pretty much what should go. I, you know, I don't think there's gonna be any dramatic changes for our department. So the first thing I'll point out is the salary, uh, part-time salary budget is uh, four hundred and twenty thousand. Last year it was three hundred and sixty, so I'm sure people are wondering why that's so much bigger. Um, and it has to do, uh, honestly, mostly with. Everybody's getting a small, like, cost of living increase. Um, but it has to do mostly with the fact that the city entered into a new uh. Agreement with the part-time employees. What do they call it? Association, we don't have unions, but it's, you know, an association. And as a result of that, there were some um, a big increase in the hourly rate for our part-time librarians. Um, enough that it could make a difference and I think also. Last year, we probably wanted more than three sixty and we didn't get it, whereas this year, they're giving me what I asked for. So that's great and the likelihood that, that again, I would rather have more than not enough. So we probably, it's possible we won't even spend that much because of vacancies, et cetera. But this is enough to operate safely and, you know, it's kind of like, that's our. Our minimum amount that we do to do what we do, so.
So is it more hours or is it the more paid for hours?
More per hour.
So, so the, but the hours is the same?
Yeah.
So it's.
Yeah. So that's great, the, the point of that, that's great news, is that no one said, why are you asking for so much money? Why do you need that? They said, that's what you need? Okay, so that's great. Um, uh, maintenance and operations, I mean, I think I've told you before, we were asked to, you know, don't ask for anything you don't need. Try to keep it, you know, we're not getting a bunch of extra money, keep it flat. So you can see on the um, operations and maintenance subtotal, uh, we are actually, you know, it's less. Than what uh, we're spending this year, it's a little bit more than what we would budgeted for this year. Uh, the reason we're spending a little more is because of the grant money that came in, that twenty two thousand dollars. So that's why, that's why we're over the estimate for this year is that we're spending more than the budget. Um, so pretty flat though, I mean, you know, from three forty one last year to three forty three. The biggest difference um, is in the capital outlay, where we're asking for essentially nothing. Um, whereas this last year, we asked for like fifty nine thousand, so I think that the, um, as far as the bottom line goes. Our, our bottom line in that orange, we're actually a little bit less than we were in the adopted budget for twenty three, twenty four. And I think that that's sort of that, the, the wages increase is up, but that fifty nine thousand dollars is gone. So it's kind of eating out. Um. And this is fine, I mean, right, like sure, we could have more money for books, we could never, you know, spend all the money that we give them, no problem. But um, the book budget you can see has been incredibly flat for a long time. Um, although you can't actually see, because these are actuals, but we haven't had like a significant change to the book budget for a long time. So at some point, we'll need to try to have that happen, but um. Nothing really in here that's a big surprise unless you have questions for me. I'm trying to see if there's anything that's like a big, I didn't bring my version of my own that has percentages and stuff. But yeah, it's pretty, pretty straightforward.
Okay, but I was wondering if we do find that we want security guard, cameras, other things. How does that get worked into the budget?
So.
Wait for the next year?
So uh, yeah, so I didn't, I didn't print the capital improvement program piece of the budget. Um, but basically, capital improvement program has all the capital improvement type stuff for the whole city and then the library has its section. This current fiscal year, the library's capital improvements were based on the idea that we would get that grant. Um, we, you know, we kind of shot for the moon, we said, let's replace all, the whole roof, let's replace the air conditioners. Because we're gonna get, you know, if someone else is gonna pay for most of it, let's just do it. Um, and then we didn't get it, but because it was a match, we had to match part of that. We had budgeted from the city's funds, a chunk of money to match what we had hoped to get. So basically, once we found out we didn't get the money, well, okay, we had, I don't, I don't have, I mean, four hundred thousand dollars or something. And now we have to reprioritize, because we can't get a whole new roof, we can't get, you know, so basically what you're gonna see um. Theoretically, what I'll say is that behind the scenes, the public work director and myself have figured out how to. Prioritize that money, um, and it includes um, the ADA ramp on the community room, lighting. Um, and any other safety things that need to happen out there. Um, it includes the below grade waterproofing on the front of the community room. It includes a whole little list of little things that came out of the facility assessment that we did in, I guess, twenty two? Twenty three, twenty three, I guess, um, things like, these handrails are not ADA. Um, the book drop's not ADA, all little things, like all these little different things, there's, you know, the finishes on these patios. Need to be resealed, stuff like that, so this whole little list, so there's that, a packet of things with a certain dollar amount. Um, then the, the key cards and the cameras, all of that is in there. Um, what else is on that? Oh, some roof, some roof stuff. Um, the biggest change that I think is gonna confuse people, you know, we've been hollering about HVAC for, since COVID came. Because we have no, I don't think we're getting a lot of fresh air and when COVID happened, um, the state. OSHA people said you need to maximize, you need to take action to maximize the fresh air that you're getting, et cetera, et cetera. So we kept, we need to do, we need to, nobody did it, so I don't need all that many anymore for ATRAC because it's fine. Um, if something breaks, obviously we'll have to fix it, but it's not, we don't need to replace the whole ATRAC system. So that chunk of money, again, all gonna be kind of we prioritized, but, but we do need to do some roof stuff. We're not gonna replace the whole roof. Um, we're gonna place the parts that are in really bad shape and see what happens. I think that um, in a way, the council member asked me today, um, well. Wouldn't it be, would it be smarter to just do it all at once? And I said, I, you know, because the tile roof is totally different from the flat sealed roof. It's really sort of two things almost, so I think it doesn't really, I, I think it behooves us to just. Do the little fixes on the flat roof, do the big fixes on the tile and wait and see how long the flat roof. Will hold out, because, you know, we might have a new library before that needs to be done, so, so we're gonna, um. Again, it's just a matter of prioritizing, right? Like if the roof's not leaking and I don't have, I don't have security cameras, I don't want security errors. Um, so, so that's what that's gonna look like, but I don't have that for you here. And again, that money, um, you know, the budget's not adopted, but that money was already in this year's budget and we didn't use it. So I don't think there's any reason that they won't say, okay, go ahead, use it now. Um, and I think there's plenty of support and understanding from the council that the building, we have a lot of deferred maintenance. And the security and safety stuff is really important, so I don't think, I, I have no. So I don't think, I, I have no, I'm sure that it'll be fine and it'll get approved. And then I think the biggest, as you guys know, the biggest challenge for us has been actually the implement, implementation. The money's there, but who's going to manage those projects? So these amounts that we budgeted for include um. Enough money to like pay for a project manager. So we, we tried to work that piece of it into the amount of money we've set aside. Because we just don't have the staff to do it. So hopefully, if, when the budget gets approved, it's, it's enough projects to like keep someone busy, like almost full-time probably. Uh, because that's one of the challenges for public works is to try to bring somebody in to do project management. They're like, well, I can get full-time, you know, consulting elsewhere. So trying to get enough work together to be able to bring in someone really good. So I think that what will hopefully happen is that when the budget gets approved, we'll get that person on board and they can just start doing all of these things. Just get it going, get their bids, get it going. So that I'm, I'm hoping, right? Because again, like this year, we didn't, none of it, we didn't do any of it, nothing that was on there. So that's the story with the capital improvement money. Um, and RFID is in there also, I should say. So the RFID project is in the capital improvement program. Where that money is coming from, it's that, that could still be a point of discussion. The, the council last year said they were going to use the, um, it's called SLURF money. It's the federal money first that was given because of COVID. Um, and so that was the source, right? It's in the capital, like the capital improvement program has everything. And then where the money is coming from, it could be a grant, it could be this, it could be that. So the RFID was going to come from SLURF. I think that's the way it still looks down the budget. But the council has been, there's been some talk about re-looking at that SLURF money, need to see what they need to do. Um, but that's in there currently. And also obviously the site planning. Money to, to start that process is in there. So that's all in there.
Thank you. Any other questions? Um, I have to put the public library survey.
I think I told you guys that I was gonna send you an additional doc with some, like, information, but I, I couldn't do it. Um, so I guess my, what I'd like to share with you today, and then maybe I can come back next month with some fun information for you. Is just to give you um, an idea about what this is all about. So the Institute for Museum and Library Services, which is a federal entity. Um, they funded this um, mechanism for gathering data from public libraries all over the country. The state library in each state kind of manages that process. So every year, we're collecting statistics on all types of things and we all submit that into it into this system. And then they take months and months to kind of, they're doing a lot of vetting. Um, and then they publish it. So we, they just published twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, and some of this stuff is available just on the state library's website. They have some ready reports that you can like click and get like a snapshot kind of graphic of what happened at your library. But um, I think that for us. We, we might want to look at things like, I don't know, whatever you want, like per capita. Um, staffing per capita, uh, collections per capita, circulation per capita. Um, you know, you can really just like literally look at anything. Um, in terms of what we report, I've got the piece that we wouldn't know, so you wouldn't know what to ask for. So let me just. Tell you, this is what the, this last year, this is like what already, like they, you can just put that, you can, it's. Do things to it. So we report, um, we report. Population, um, number of branches, uh, we report library income. We report library expenditures, we report um, staffing. We report wages, specifically, we report capital, capital investment. Um, we report how much we're spending on print materials, how much we're spending on digital materials. Um, how much we're spending on whatever kinds of materials. Um, we report, again, lots of staff stuff. Um, how many librarians, how many not librarians? And then we do uh, collections. So we can look at, you know, how do our collections compare to other libraries? Um, so everything, and again, breaking it into physical materials, social materials, audio, visual. Breaking it down lots of different ways. Um, then they do uh, library hours. Um, gate count, number of people that come. Um, reference questions, how many reference interactions do we have? Um, then we go through the circulation numbers. So they've got all the circulation stuff. Um, they look at all of the digital resource use and they then go into all of the programming. So children's programming, all ages programming, adult programming, teen programming, um, both number of programs and attendance. Um, so it's, there's a lot there to look at. And if you just look at it kind of, just look at a couple of things quickly. What you typically see for us is that we have more materials per capita. And we have higher circulation per capita. Um, so it's kind of go hand in hand. We're circulating things. We have more things because more things circulate. Um, so that's interesting. I was looking at um, staffing per capita or staffing. For a court budget. Anyway, this is the problem. So people self-report this data. And it's, it's like a forty-three page instruction book with the, like the scope notes for each of these pieces of information. So if you don't understand it, you, and you submit something, there, there could be problems. So if you're running a report, sometimes you'll see something like, somebody will say, you know, it'll say they had ten thousand programs. I'm like, that's not, it's, it's completely out of the ballpark. So we're just going to disregard that one. But I noticed it said that we're, we have a, like, really high staffing. Like we have tons of staff compared to other libraries. So I don't know who's reporting what. I don't know if it's we reported something, like we didn't follow their instructions correctly. Or if somebody else didn't follow the instructions correctly. But that's the only problem with the data. Sometimes if you know, you'll see things and think, well, that, somebody didn't do that right. And they try really hard to catch that. I mean, they really do. When you're, when you're putting in your data. If it varies too much, if there's too much of a variance over the prior year, they won't let you put it in. You have to explain it, what's going on. And they'll, after you've submitted, they'll call you and say, I don't, this count, what is this? So they're really pretty careful, but obviously things slip by. But um. It's, it's interesting and it's fun to look at. And I think it helps again, you know, for trying to raise money to build a new building. To be able to show how we compare to the other libraries around us, you know, how many people come here, how much use is there? Um, so that kind of stuff. So I don't know if you guys have anything in particular that you'd be interested in or particular libraries you'd want to compare us to. Or if you just, I can just do some of that thing, you know.
We can go on, we can go to the California State.
You can.
Our own and look at stuff.
You can. I can send you the link.
Yeah.
Um, I don't, it's.
Is it open, is the link public?
Yeah, some of it. So I think that on the state libraries page, it's a lot of like the ready reports. So, and I don't, I don't have it open. Actually, I can look on it here because this is not on screen. Hold on, I'll tell you right now. Um, so some of the ready reports are there. When I work with it typically, I just download the whole file because um. It's just easier to spill it all down for me. Um, but uh, what they have. Yeah, I think that, that the problem with the, well, they might have it broken down. They might have it in subsets of like uh, population based. So you can press and get libraries within the same population thing. Um, so what can you look at? Download the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. So maybe you can, you can get the whole thing.
Okay.
You can get all the data, but I'll send you guys a link.
Alright.
So you can get all the data, but I know that they have some quick reports, so that you're not just digging through. I mean, I know, how many libraries, eight hundred? There's a lot of libraries. Um, and it's also. You know, i- if you're looking at population and the library is Alpine County. Their population might be like ours, but their circumstances are completely different, right? So you're not, you're not, you know, you kind of, there might be people you want to compare to that you wouldn't think, but that actually are a better fit. Because of the, you know, the urban or non-urban or whatever. So if you guys, I guess what I would say maybe is you guys, if you want to look at this and tell me if there's anything in particular. But otherwise, maybe I'll just kind of pull some stuff and we can look at some of our neighbors. And it's just kind of fun to see. And typically what happens is we spend a ton of time all year collecting all this information. And then we spend a ton of time inputting it. And then it comes out and we never do anything with it. So um, I just want, I thought, let's try, let's try to, let's try to look at it and see what we see.
Can I make a suggestion or um, something to consider? I think this data would be really cool for the ad hoc committee. So not you in particular, but that's what I was thinking. And then just to delegate it so it's not on you and your team, like those consult, or the people who submitted the proposals. Should be looking at the data to drag their proposals of like, what's our constituency and like the utilization of services to, like.
And they do, they'll do that. I mean, the strategic planning, do you remember, you were here, right? And Diana was like, Matt, you know, why did you choose it? They didn't do a very good job. Um. They, she wasn't happy with like the, the libraries that they chose to compare to. And they didn't ask, you know, they didn't ask us, they just did it. And so, um, so yeah, I think that m- most of these applicants, they'll definitely, they know. That if they work with libraries, they know this is out there. I think our biggest challenge with um, the ad hoc is trying to figure out the community services side of it, right? I mean, I'm not sure if Lucy know about all that, but I don't know about that. Do they have something comparable? You know, like where's their, how are they going, how are we going to do that for them? But yeah, that's a great idea is to make sure. Then again, I'm thinking. You know, if we have a, with the website and we have a report that's easy to absorb and. Kind of, you know, graphical version that people can look at and go, oh, interesting, we're, that's how we compared our KDA, or that's how we compared to Sarah Madre.
Well, I'll play around with it and I'll look at the ready reports.
Yeah, I'll send you the link because I, I don't know, I don't, yeah, yeah, but you can download the whole.
It's thousands of pages.
Um, it's, it's Excel spreadsheet.
Okay.
So no, it's not thousands. It's just a, it's a, I mean, it's just a lot of data points. So it's like, you know, there's in the libraries and then.
Yeah.
It goes all the way out. Um, but that was basically, I just wanted you guys to kind of know.
Yeah.
That's what it is and that we have access to all that information. And I'll try to, we'll, we'll put together some information for you guys to show you what's going on. And I'm going to find out why they think we have so many staff.
Yeah. Like, I don't think that's a, that can't be right. I mean, especially if it's publicly available, then you know, anyone could go and see that and.
Yeah, we should be, right, we should be ready. I know, I was like, oh, great. I, that's the last thing I need.
It was pressing that.
Like I, I, yeah, yeah, it's, last year they changed the methodology for how they calculate. They used to have a certain method for, um, how do you calculate the part-time? How do you make part-time into full-time equivalent? And it was all very, very complicated, but we had a whole system and we would do it and we figured it out. And then they changed it last year. And I'm almost wondering if something.
Yeah.
Went awry, either the way we did it, or they did it, or other people didn't understand it either. I don't know. And in fact, I'm going to look back because I think if we can look back at like, I mean, it's hard to, because COVID messed every, all these numbers are crazy, right? Through the whole COVID couple of years, everything's off. But if I go back like to eighteen, nineteen and look at staffing per capita or something. Even budget per capita, I mean, Altadena has like twice as big a budget as we have. You know, it's interesting to see how much we do on. Yeah.
Compared to have their own library system?
They do. It's a, it's a library district, special district. So that's basically all they have in Altadena. That's their local government. So they, you know, so yeah, they have uh, tax, they, they get it for, you know, big tax for it. So yeah, it's interesting to see. We'll definitely look at budgets because that too is like. I can't believe, you know, who, why do they have so much money? So, um, okay, so I will do that. And in the meantime, I'm going to, I'll send you guys the link. And um, for July.
Thank you. Do you want to continue on to library operation?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't, um, I don't even know what's in here. Oh, shoot, Bree just emailed me. Our summer reading program signup numbers. So summer reading program technically was Monday, first day. But we had done pre-registration like a few days before. And on the first day of pre-registration, we had eighty-seven people signed up already. And uh, Bree, I'm hoping this, I think it's going to probably be like a thousand people.
Wow. Just in this week? Wow. Were, were you here, Sam?
I was here. I can't even remember.
Yeah. Oh, I get it. And I, well, I went to, I went to the Zoom meetings for the housing.
Oh, yeah, which I'm sure people are probably saying that we did that on purpose so people.
Yes, I, I knew I couldn't make both of them.
Yeah, it was really great. And I, it's always hard to tell how big a crowd it is, but um. We were giving away uh, shave ice and we gave away two-hundred-and-thirty-four.
Wow.
And not everybody had shave ice, right? So I'm, we must have like three hundred, three twenty-five.
I can't, my kids had two, so. How would the, uh, mayor in it?
So good.
I know. I mean, I think I was like happy last night. That's, it was going to be my communication that like, I feel like that's why people come too. I was like, playing the mayor too, like, it's just so expensive to go there now. And so that's a free show to see them. And the kids have never seen them before.
One thousand two hundred and ten.
Wow.
First week. Yeah, it's pretty awesome. And it was so interesting last night because I sort of make an assumption that. If people are at the program, they like know what's going on. And so I was talking to some moms and. I was like, I forget how the conversation came up, but they know nothing about summer reading program. They don't even know there is a summer reading program. They just saw on Instagram and they came last year too. I said, oh, well, there's a whole other piece of it, you know, that they just had no idea. So I realized, oh, I guess at these events, we need to be like maybe out in the crowd to the extent we have staff to do it, you know, really.
Boo.
We do have a booth, but people don't go to the, you know, like people don't necessarily go to the booths. We just need to kind of walk around the blankets and say, did you, yay, did you know we have summer reading and your kids can suck out?
Do that too. My kids could have done it, we all.
It's like when um, when we were, uh, was it before the chats? No, it was strategic planning and we needed them to fill out the survey. Like we went to the concerts in Bartle, and it costed everyone on their blankets and said, take our survey.
Um, because on farmer's market this tonight too, and the, the teen volunteers, I know.
It's, that's a lot of staffing issues.
It is.
Thursday nights.
Yeah.
Super hard. But um, the kids, the teens are doing great. Um, they seem, you know, we're doing all paper this year. And the, the digital tracking, while some people liked it, it was really hard for the teens to help people. Sign up and do what they needed to do. So I think it's been much more successful for the, the helpers, the volunteers this year. Cause they can, you know.
And they're wonderful. Like, let's hear it, the library gym, they sit there at the front. They're just, they're so wonderful.
Yeah.
They're great.
You know, the parents and the kids.
They helped us set up last night.
Yeah.
Like they're all on the chairs. I'm like, you're young, you, you carry that. I'll just hold the door.
Um, actually, I was.
There was over three hundred people last night.
Oh my gosh, there was, I think it was more than three hundred people. It was so.
Beautiful. The whole entire grass was completely.
And it was out this way.
Mm-hmm, that way. It was so many people and lots of friends that already don't even live in South Pass that were there. And they said, the first summer reading.
Yeah, 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 it was a huge crowd. And I, I mean, I'm sure that the free.
Oh, yeah.
Shave ice helped. I mean, right, everybody likes a free thing. Um, if we could afford that, I would just, we would do that all the time.
It was the first time doing that, right?
It was. I was like, it's, because it's about Baker and they get those little ice creams. I was like, we gotta get a little ice cream truck thing. We got a little ice creams. And then we were like, oh, that's dairy. Like we got it. And I'm like, okay, what can we, we can get ice. Everybody can eat the ice and then the sugar. But um, so yeah.
It was perfect.
It just seemed like it went well. So yeah, it was really great.
Did you guys announce the summer reading programs? I would, I was, I missed the beginning.
You know, um, the, so the friends did the introduction, uh, Kevin.
I saw Kevin there, yeah.
So he, you know, he got, he went up and we're the friends and this is so important. And I remember when I was a kid, like he kind of. And I remember when I was a kid, like he kind of, but I don't, I don't know that he said like, well, he did, go sign up. Yeah, maybe differently than we would have said it if we were there and maybe, I don't think they're gonna do that at everyone. So maybe in the next ones, if staff are the ones.
I think, cause when it ended, it just ended. So I do think that would have been a moment where you could have said something.
Yeah.
Or think, or just give some more recognition of the libraries putting this on.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, I mean, Kevin did that a lot upfront. He, he, staff didn't even go to the podium. He was like the person who welcomed everyone and, you know. Um, but yeah, I think that if the staff are, would be a little more explicit, you know? Like when he said, sign up, it's great. And you know, I remember as a kid, like it was really sweet little um, intro that he did. But yeah, we would probably say, you can win prizes, go right now, like, you know, like get them in there. Um, so yeah, actually, I don't know. It, I, it'd be interesting to see how many people signed up last night.
There was a lot of people.
Like between like five and eight who signed up. Um, so that summer reading program, uh, the city has a new website. Um, it is much more attractive than the old website. I think it's a little easier to find things. Um, a lot of, it was an opportunity for us to try to clean up our content a little bit. We have a lot of content on the website. So I think if you're looking for something and you don't find it, it may not be there. It may be something that moved, I don't know. We're still playing with it a little bit. So I think that um, we'll probably continue to see some changes. Um, but it does, it looks better. It looks nice, I think. So that's that, just that way. And then we realized too, you know, again, whenever you do a project, there's unintended consequences. No one thought about all the QR codes that we've published on bookmarks. And so those all, you know, were broken. So we were able to fix it, but this things we didn't, you know, all those things we don't think about. But it's working pretty well now. The QR codes are working. Um, everything's good. And then this is kind of a, a long thing, but I just wanted to give you guys an idea of this wifi situation. Um, cause it took a lot of time and it's pretty important. So um, we get all of our connectivity here at the library through um, a state library program that connects us to a fiber optic network that's kind of universities, um, public libraries, school libraries. That's who can use it. Um, and we get very discounted rate on our wifi. So um, and we get, it's really great. I mean, we never have, the wifi is never down, right? And there's plenty of bandwidth. I mean, before that, all you did all day long.
Down, I just moved over here.
Yeah. Yeah, it's really good. And um, and uh, we get a really good rate. Um, we did, so what happens is we pay upfront and then we get our uh, California teleconnect fund. There's some rebate that we get. Um, and the state library has, there's like a, a middleman essentially who kind of takes our payments and then gets our, gets our reimbursement and something back to us. And the state library keeps changing who that is, but we have to contract with that entity. So we did a new contract, the state library changed it, we had to do another new contract. And um, so the good news is we are, we have a contract now with the new entity. And they just got us um, our rebate that was many, many, many months overdue. Um, so that's good. We got our money and they got it in by the, this, I mean, I was like, I needed this this one year. Both the bill, like I have, they have a bill that we needed and, and our rebate. So hopefully we have a five-year agreement with them. So hopefully no surprises. And they stay, you know, we just stay with the same vendor for five years. Um, but that's not up to us, that's up to the state library. But I just wanted to share that with you. And otherwise, operationally, firing. So much, we're just super busy with the budget, with trying to spend the money at the end of the year, with getting ready for summer reading program, with the ad hoc committee. Um, it's just been a lot going on. So I'm sure there's all kinds of things happening um, that the staff could tell you about, but I probably don't know what they are. But we covered some of it already, cause we talked about some of the safety stuff and we're working on those things. But we're, I think we're good. I think it was good for staff morale last night to have a good event. You know, the run-up to summer reading this year has been kind of chaotic because we came on board in December. By December, we're already supposed to have like X, Y, Z done. And we don't, and you have a new person. You know, so it's been a little bit, even last night, it was like, did somebody mark off where the, the shave ice truck is gonna go? You know, like everyone was, so next year, we're, we're already thinking about next year. And what we want that to look like, right? And I think poor Bree, she's new. So she's like, is this how they do things around here, you know? So we just need to kind of get back on the same page and um, make sure everybody knows what their part is. But I think last night was nice. I think everybody felt it about. And so I know.
Uh, questions or anything else? Um, communications, I was just gonna thank you for the event last night. I thought it went really well, like I shared and um, just. You know, just, well, I miss why you love living here. Like it's just, it was so sweet, it was so good. Uh, I was gonna specifically just highlight and kind of uh, commend you and Bree for how you handle that altercation. I was here when this woman was kind of, just, you know, she was having a moment and she was yelling at the teens who are running the front desk. And it was scary, cause I actually knew that girl who was there. She was only in sixth grade.
I know.
And so, and they're there without their parents, right? And they're doing a very adult thing to like do this. And you and Bree were just so wonderful, immediately.
Yeah.
Telling this woman, you know, she was basically, she, I think she was having some illusion that they were talking about her. And then, you know, I mean, but as a kid, it's very scary.
Yeah.
And especially as a volunteer. So I feel like you guys just handled it so well and.
I mean, we had, we, you know, it's happened before, so we kind of know, like, we gotta get the kids out of that space. I honestly thought that if I had just let the person go, the kids might not have even noticed. But because we said, hey, you can't say that that didn't go over, you know, that just made it worse. Um, but yeah, Bree quickly.
It's a quick, it's like a moment, right, on what to do. So I, I think it just highlights how much you guys are in that position. So especially with those kids there.
Yeah, those four, I mean, right, it's, you don't, I mean, it doesn't happen very often, but even if it's not directed at the kids. I mean, this was a person who was kind of clearly can't control outbursts and. You get, you know, it was just kind of, you know, it made no sense. But um, other times there's just things happening in that vicinity. And so, yeah, you have to think a lot about, hey, I gotta get those kids out of that space and we gotta make sure they're okay. And, you know, if we have to talk to parents, you know, it depends on what's going on. But um, thank you.
Yeah.
I'll let Bree know.
Let Bree know. Yeah, I mean, um, I feel like it, it feels good to know that those kids have that kind of support. So.
Yeah, we try to keep our, our eyes on them, so they're not just all by themselves.
I've never thought about that for them until that thing happens.
Yeah.
Hey, um, so thank you. Um, Bianca, anything to report, communicate?
Uh, no, well, you know, I'll just, I, I will, and then I'll just do the, but join it with the. Yeah, uh, um. Well, they had um, a little uh, thank you volunteer books picnic the other day at Garfield Park. And that was very nice. So I attended.
Oh, did you go?
Yeah, and it was, you know, I just, cause I wanna kind of support. But one thing that I told them that I would, because we all have different groups of people. They are in need of volunteers in the bookstore. They've uh, a couple of people are kind of uh, moving off and they're only two-hour shifts. So, but you know, we might know some people um, who, you know, can, can do it. So I told them that I would uh, announce it. And uh.
Who do they contact if they wanna do that?
Uh, I would say the Karens.
Um, well, they, we have a.
But there is a uh, an application.
There's, we have a little like information card that people fill out. Let me look and see what we have on their website. I think we have something about what they're supposed to do. I'll do that while you guys.
Anything else, Bianca?
No, and they're, you know, and just uh, they, they, their newsletter is just wonderful. Uh, and they, finally, the new logo. They got approved the new logo, the digital logo, so.
That has been like a four-year journey.
Yes, it's been a, yes. Yeah, but, but this, this younger generation that's on the Friends, they are uh.
Very interesting.
They're very interesting, very different than um, going, than what it used to be. Yeah, that's all.
So if you would like to volunteer with the Friends, please inquire at their email address, sbplfriends@yahoo.com.
Follow their website.
It's on our website, but.
On our website?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's on theirs, but it's on our site.
Okay. Thank you, Bianca. Uh, did you have anything to offer?
Yeah, um, I don't wanna take too much time, but I did go to the library conference that they have in uh, Ontario. Um, and this was on May twenty-two, and the next day I wrote up these notes, which I haven't looked at until today. Um, but I'm glad I did write them down, cause there are a, a lot of, you know, ideas here. And I think maybe I'll try and share a couple of them at least. Um, one that I found fascinating is that uh, one of the sponsors of this program was Ontario Airport. And so they had a speaker come. Ontario Airport, you can go and get a little short story. They've got a kiosk, you punch a button and a short story comes out.
Like a printed one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's so cool. Um, I'd never heard of such a thing. Um, one of the sessions was all about fundraising and, you know, some aspects of that. But uh, there were a couple of speakers in the afternoon, a panel, I guess, about book banning and fighting book banning. Um, and I found some of those things, you know, a, a statement was made, should the libraries be neutral? There isn't any such thing as libraries being neutral. Um, there's an organization, Unite Against Book Bans. Um, anyway, uh, you know, the, the idea of that, you know, loud people can be threatening to patrons, that's kind of a given, but loud people can be threatening to employees. And kind of whatever you can do as a, you know, supporter of libraries, try and do it and support your staff. Um, there was a breakout session at the end. I, I, there were four members of the Friends from South Pasadena that were there. The breakout session was for trustees and there were, I counted seventeen trustees. So most of the people at the, at the event were, were friends. And most of these trustees came from bigger cities with maybe a multitude of branches and things like that. Um, but even there, there was discussion about, um, you know, what can we do to, you know, fight against book banning, something called the Freedom to Read Act. I've never heard of this, but you know, post it, post it in the library. Um, anyway, it was uh, well worth it and I might see if there are some things here that perhaps would be, you know, useful to bring up to the group as a whole, but I haven't really kind of organized myself yet, so.
Was it well attended?
I would say hmm, three hundred, four hundred people. It was, it was pretty good. Yeah. Yeah. And they give you a lunch and see, not so bad, so. Um, and, oh, and one of the other things is, and, and I've never been clear on this, a little bit of the alphabet soup at the beginning. The California Library Association, are we members of that just automatically somehow?
No, we, we pay an institutional membership fee and most of the staff are members. We used to um, sign the board members up. But we didn't this year, because I, we just, we had sort of forgot to do it. But then I was also like, are you guys getting anything out of that? I mean, I think sometimes you, you become a member just to support that organization. Um, so we can go back to, you know, giving you guys all memberships if we want to.
What is, what's the cost though?
Um, I, I feel like for trustees, it's gonna be like forty-five dollars.
Each?
What's the benefit?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure what.
I remember someone did a presentation for us that we didn't.
Yeah, I mean, again, I think it's honestly, as even as a librarian, the benefit is um, the California, the, the California Library Association is um, it's having some struggle. I feel like it's having some struggles right now. So, you know, you're, you're a member, you know, it's a huge state, they are important. Um, and uh, but yeah, I don't know that you would actually get things out of it. You would be supporting an important, you know, institution for libraries in our state, but.
And, and there is, I guess, they have an annual meeting and it will be in Pasadena in October.
Yeah.
Uh, and again, I don't know whether there'd be anything useful for us if we were to attend.
Oh, I don't think they, wow, that's a good question. I don't know if they do anything for Friends and Trustees. I mean, you'd be welcome to attend, but it's very um, library focused. So they'll have a director's summit, like we'll have it all day with all the library directors from the state. And then, you know, it's, it's a regular conference. There'll be all kinds of stuff happening. And it's nice that it's local, cause we, you know, it's in Pasadena, so a lot of our staff should be able to, to go. But yeah, when the, when that comes out, we'll look at that. Um, and yeah, I would save you a little money, probably. The registration will be a little cheaper if you're a member. But um, we'll have to look at that uh, program and see what's on. I don't, I think it usually has things specifically geared toward.
And, and there was something, uh, you know, a speaker from the American Library Association. Um, uh, uh, there's even a subdivision or a division of it called United for Libraries, which focuses on advocacy on behalf of libraries. So I, it might be worth exploring a little bit, some of these things and whether they would be things that trustees would have any interest in. But anyhow, it was a, unlike last year when I was very disappointed, this one was pretty strong.
Speaking of uh, United for Libraries, so the ALA does have a, you know, there's a million like subparts to the ALA. And one of them is for trustees, friends, advocacy kind of things. And they have lots of interesting resources there. Um, and it's, ALA is really extensive to be a member. So I was actually thinking of adding that to my memberships, that I could get to that stuff. And then if people are interested in it, we have access to it. We don't have to sign everybody up. Um, so I can look at that again. I can look at that a lot. But like when we're working on, like you said, the freedom to read, like, there's just some good tools in there for, for trustees and boards and friends. And it's, it's that little subset just for that purpose. So we can look at that and see what that was like.
Don't they have author readings though at uh, the, the conference?
Where? At the California Library Association?
Isn't it?
No.
What, what's the one where they used to have?
You know, it's, I mean, that, you know, they have speakers, but I don't know that, and authors, they might have authors like speaking, but not really.
What's it?
They had one of this.
Yeah. Yeah, they do that there, that you guys usually have an author as.
Yeah, somebody.
Conference where they do the books. Books. We would see you guys at the conference online. What conference is that? I know.
Are you talking about like?
Yeah.
The Los Angeles Festival of Books? I don't know what you're talking about. I have a whole memory.
I see, I see librarians, you guys. And I go, what do you guys do at this conference? And you guys say, what are you doing at this conference?
Thank you, Ed, for going though.
Sure.
Thank you for sharing. Annie, any communications?
Um, just that I'm looking forward to digging into the administrative policies review. It sounds like something, a lot of substance to it and a lot of fun with it and to create it and.
So I mean, that's fine, policy fun.
I know, I'm like, he's gonna have fun. That sounds like it's just right up your alley. That's perfect.
Um, then any updates?
Um, I also just wanted to share that I think the li, I'm, I, it sounds like they do it every year. But I think the librarians coming to the schools to promote the summer reading program went over really well this year because my daughters, on the day of pre-registration, insisted on coming. We came right before closing. To sign up. And then there were kids from softball who insisted on coming. They were like, this is the day. And then I was just telling Annie, like, uh, we went on like a big Girl Scout camping trip and all the girls brought their vlogs. And like after a full day of outdoor activities, they were like, we have to read. So they read in their bunk beds with their headlamps and they're filling out their logs. So, and they just kept saying, well, like Bree came and told us, we have to do it like this. So they're taking it really seriously. I'm so glad it like resonated with you.
Yeah, they really do. I mean, it makes such a difference going to the classroom. I don't know what it is, but the kids come in and they're like, I saw you at my school, you know, it's like some whole different thing. It's funny. But yeah, it makes, it makes a big difference um, to go into schools. So yeah. We tried to, we tried to go to all of them and get them there.
Help free, all the great feedback.
I will.
Um, thank you. And uh, Friends of Library not here, City Council Liaison not here. And um, anything else on, on the liaison to the Friends? And any other communications?
I did wanna say one thing, this before the meeting started, Ed asked me a question, which was a good question. Um, if any of the trustees have things they would like on.
Things they would like on the agenda. Um, for example, if Ed thinks there's something from that meeting that we wanna talk about in more depth and discuss, whatever. Just let Sean and I know and then we'll talk to Annie, because as the president, Annie looks over the agenda and, you know. We would communicate that to her and, um, so yeah, just let us know if there's something you would like to have on the agenda, just let us know.
Thank you for saying that.
I didn't, I didn't, yeah, I didn't think of it.
That's great, so yeah.
I was like, oh, yeah, yeah, please, um, whatever, you know, send her.
Okay, but then, then, then if something's not on the agenda, we can't talk about it. Is that what it is?
That's correct.
But, but, but what about if we bring it up in communications?
Well, you're not supposed to kind of, you're not supposed to like use that as a way to have a conversation.
So if you wanna discuss something, you should try to get it on the.
Yeah, you just let us know and we'll just put it on as a discussion item.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, communications, you're, it's really supposed to be kind of like a reporting out sort of thing. It's not meant to generate. I mean, I know sometimes we do the answer questions and talk amongst ourselves, but. Yeah, just, just let us know. That's great. I mean, we're always, you know, we put on whatever the regular things are and whatever you guys told us. And then sometimes the president will say, oh, could you put this on or look at this? But yeah, just let, let Sean and I know if you have something you want.
Last thing for my communication, I am going to the Fisher's Congress this week.
Um, and. Oh, good.
Okay, good.
Um, yeah, so yeah, okay. And Annie, I, we had, there was a meeting today about Fisher's Congress.
Oh, that's, over next week at the. I'm going to.
He'll put me for second like, uh, what are we talking about?
No, no, it's not required. I mean, last year it's been me and.
Okay.
What was it where we? Oh, no, that was.
That was the previous year.
That was the previous year when. We had Dean couldn't find you.
Yeah, that's right. So I'll be submitting these. Um, with like the holdouts in terms of getting that information, goals and stuff to them, because they're putting that all together. And my understanding is. Mary will send out the slideshow, so you can see what's on the slides, but it's gonna be what we've already.
Should we wear our blue shirts?
You, you can wear your blue shirts and anybody new will be getting a blue shirt.
Okay.
Yeah.
Funded. When the yes. Yes. Okay, um, that's the last thing I wanted to remember to ask about. Um, any other items, the public comments? With no further items or comments from staff or board members, I will now adjourn the meeting at eight thirty-seven. To our next meeting on July eleventh at seven PM.